Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Shall we bow our heads in prayer? Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings upon our life. We thank you for the privilege to be here in this setting today. We thank you, Father, for our great nation that you've given to us and for the government that you have established for us. We thank you for these many women that have been elected to these positions that oversee the county government here. We pray for your divine wisdom and direction. We read your word, Lord, that you say that wisdom is the principal thing, therefore give wisdom, and when I aren't getting it, understand it. And that if any of us lack wisdom, then we can ask it of you, and you will give it to all men liberally, and we thank you for that. We pray for your divine guidance, O God, upon these men and women in the business at hand for our county, for our people, for our government, and we pray that you will just give them that understanding that they need. We understand, Lord, from the word of God, on what occasion? In the Old Testament, your word says that the children of Isacar had understanding of the times, to know what Israel ought to do. And we pray for understanding of the times, God, for all of our government officials, to know what to do in this difficult and trying time as we also walk through this pandemic. And we thank you for your grace and your love and your mercy. And we pray and ask this, Lord, in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Ronnie. At this time, Brother Ronnie, if you want to say your welcome, too, if you need to go that time, too, if you will say your... Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll call on Reverend Mary Catherine, as she will lead us in her place.
I say...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Mary. Thank Reverend Mary, her pleasure. Thank Brother Ronnie for the clarification. At this time, whatever roll call, whoever wants to sign anything, please. That's my claim, but I'll be here to say that just any back person or shoulder, whatever, and the toddler here shortly needs to get off over it now so that we can... Appreciate y'all for that. Nineteen present. Thank you. This time, you have the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda. motion by Ashley, second by Audrey, especially. We've got to go. We've got to go to the cabinet. We're glad to stand. I'll chair it. What do you think? Got it covered. Okay, any other special? Okay, like a person, I think yes. At this time, we'll open the floor for a vote of comments. As you know, we now have a call call we're establishing for, we have 20 minutes in length and two minutes total, and two minutes per person. And at this time, we have, I recognize, by our age, how old you would, and you've got some share, but just make it known. Appreciate your service, Mr. Kent, on April 30. I'll be here. Thank you.
I wanted to kind of tell you, like, in the budget, what we've come to an agreement with. We met, I met with the pockets last night, county, and we talked, and we had some of it pretty much figured out, and we finished it last night. So what it is, this year, this fiscal year, we're committed to give the county an extra 107,146, which will bring it up from 112,854 to 220,000 this year. And I've got three major projects I have to upgrade this year, so next fiscal year, I have said that as the director, I will go to the 911 board, and I will request that they give an extra, somewhere around 130,000 in the next fiscal year budget, which if we do that, that will be, you know, right at the 240,000 extra that we receive from extra fees. As I told them last night, I can't promise that the 911 will do that, but as the director, I think if I recommend it to him, and Scott's our financial, and I've talked with him, and, you know, we, I feel confident that we can do this. I just wanted y'all to know that's what it is, and I'm asking that our funds that were taken out of the budget for 911 salaries be placed back in the budget for this year. You guys got any questions?
Thank you. We'll ask one minute, and somebody coming forward. So any other, anyone else signed up? Does anyone else have any comments on that? Anyone else sign anything? Okay. Thank you. At this point, we will review and match the approval events of the previous meeting. How about you? The approval events of the previous meeting. motion by Ashley, second by... I've got to say, no matter what. Okay. Also, I'd ask you, Reverend Mary, so we'll go play first, so Reverend Mary, just second by discussion. Discussion. Any other discussion, as both please, you're going to be going with approval of that. Got any questions?
Number eight, resolutions of memorial sympathy commendation. I don't have any this time, but I'll have Gene's dealings next time because he's arranged for me just yet.
We will thank Gene for his service during the calendar.
Number nine, elections appointments and confirmations, nine and eight, notaries.
Have a motion to approve. Motion by... And a second by, I guess, discussion. Hold it on approval of the notaries, if you have a... Everybody in the house, go please. Ninety, like a person, like a...
Non-beige, ambulance board.
All the campus boards go by appointments on positions that are coming up in July. We've got three positions coming up this year, and I'm asking this very serve, Tom Field, who's deserving, and I will thank nine honorary for her service for many years on the record to that authority, but I've asked Dr. Jeff Keel, who has served in position, he's agreed to that. And then our third one will be Dr. Jack Trustman, who's deserving. He's up for a little bit more here, so I place those names, four of those ones, Tim Doublefield, Dr. Jeff Keel, Dr. Jack Trustman. Have a motion to approve. Already got most. Thank you, this is second by... Any discussion? I'll call for the motion. I appreciate the service of our community members and what they've done on that. I appreciate that and her service. Settle the...
Nancy, library board.
We've got positions for appointment, Mr. Joe Todd, library board of the community East, and Reverend Ron Cole. Have a motion to approve those, motion by Margaret, and I'll pass you up, discussion of the... Motion by Margaret, and second by Nancy, discussion. I'll let go, please. I appreciate their service for the library board.
Nancy, emergency management agency board.
I'm asking for the appointment, Dr. James Trustman, who has agreed to serve on one of his positions, and would give service for the emergency board, so I have motion to approve, Dr. Trustman, and second by... Thank you, Mark. Discussion. Everybody, go please. And the discussions at that level, the first amendment, had a lot of discussions in the last three, four months, as you know, room one. But with all that, I would share that I called in, we now have 182 total cases, hostage, and Mike, I think we said we have act fifty that are active, that's only some, with 102 that are recovered. And I know surrounding counties are really shooting up, and you know, we run the cannon on 4,000 cases, and more than shooting up now today, Thursday morning. Okay.
Nancy, veteran service officer.
Okay. We were all, this Monday, was Dr. John Prudential, as our veteran service officer. He was thoroughly vetted, we interviewed him, and we had a person from Veterans Administration coming down to give us some audits on that, and I'm really impressed with him at the independence. And Don has 17 years of active duty. He's our veteran, we appreciate this. He's been more than one ambush, and some audio, whatever, and probably he's highly recommended, and so that's my point forward, is John Prudential, as our veteran service officer, and he will be in full class the second week, the last week of July, and I'll have him back. When it does take, he will be over there getting location and action, but he will be on the class there for five days, five weeks, but so I have motion to, motion by Margaret and second by Ashley, thank y'all, and discussion. Discussion. He'll be there, assigned, who works late after week, that's the number hours that Gene has scheduled. He'll work there four hours on Saturday, three, four days, and that will provide particularly important service to our veterans. Go please.
Number eleven, new business. A resolution 2020-16, authorizing up to $3 million, 12-year capital out of tenants.
Have a motion to, I would say this has been thoroughly vetted, you know, we've been reviewing this for about three years now, and finally it's on the table, but I have votes, I have votes, I think, and second by Mark again, thank you, Mark. Special. Mark. Motion by Mike, second by Margaret, discussion. The two representatives, I'll try and play, I appreciate being here today, and we get 1,000,000 for the rest of us. So they, yes, they... I appreciate being here, although they're all excited, we now, so everybody who's here that I'm discussing, whoever, so it deserves a bit. Any discussion? Everybody in the house, go please.
Eleven, the resolution 2027-2021 budget appropriation resolution.
Okay, you can have that in front of you, so at this time, we have motion by Margaret, with a second by Mike. All of them, one, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution 2027, to restore 419,863 to the 911 line item in the budget and through the appropriations resolution.
So that's a motion.
And part of that is we reached an understanding with 911, and there's a letter from 911, to clarify the understanding, we agree upon adding 107,146 to 112,000 in the budget currently, and also to add the extra funding for the fee increases on the phone to approximately 240,000. So the end result will be where we've been getting 112,000, this year will go to 220,000, and start the next fiscal year, the amount will go from 112 to approximately 340 or 350, depending on the total that comes from the increase in the 911 phase. I have the letter to that effect here, the mayor has it in hand, from 911 director, and therefore I'm making the amendment to restore the funding total to 911, 419,863, that line item in the budget. Another amendment, I'm willing to follow up on this, relation to the revenue side, we put 107,146 at 911, is increasing the line item line, which is the impact fees back to the county this fiscal year. This will allow them, they have about four projects, they could double up to about 250,000. This will allow them to take care of those projects for this fiscal year, that are adding fence around the facility which is needed, include that, and also they'll be retiring about 400,000 plus in debt, so they will be debt-free operationally, starting now, basically. And in the next fiscal year, they will be able to return these funds to taxpayers in this county, and I feel this is a deck for a prior arrangement with 911 taxpayers in this county, therefore that's the original discount.
Right, that a motion?
Yeah, second one.
Have a minute. There are a second, two, that, same with Mike. So we have a second by, Mark, on that. Discussion on that spin.
So Bobby, I just need a clarification, because you said that we're increasing it to 419,000, which is the other public safety 9/11, and why we can have that thing?
That's correct. That will restore, initially, 911 was going to be funded to January 1, which was added with wages and salaries. After having reached an agreement, understand that we have, we're going to restore the 419,000, which will complete the entire fiscal year for 911.
So the document I have in front of me has the correct number, we're not increasing that, so it was the 250, it was increased to 419,000.
No, the only appropriations resolution you have there, you go down to 911 impact or other public safety, 911 in appropriations resolution, the 419863, there will be added back additionally, 419863, which will fund the second half of the year for 911, so you will have that line on comes two times, 419863.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Reverend Mary. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Bryan, draw the... No other discussion? Let's go, please. We're voting on the amendment. Ninety-nine, we're working on that.
Nineteen, yes.
Nineteen, yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to offer amendment to the budget document, and this will be on the revenue side, and that will reflect that the 112,000, roughly, impact paid back to the county, that line item, being rates, it's 112,854, and that line item, 48130 dot 911, will go to 220,000, so that is 107,146 additional amount that is cut from 911 this fiscal year to that line item, so that line item will become 220,000.
So that increases the income for anybody that'll manage. Do I have a motion to approve the amendment? The vote by George, second, second by Ashley, Brown, do on that amendment, discussion on that amendment. Any notice discussion on that, I spoke, please? Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Bobby again.
I believe, well, as far as I'll have, we had this on the budget. There's also a line item, and Ms. Edgert can address this if she'd like, whoever, you can play, whoever. My understanding is that insurance department, in Berkeley, there was a line item left out, and they submitted on the budget, it's approximately 14,000. Mariana, what's that amount?
That's our emergency, 14,000.
14,000, even, okay, and so I would offer also amendment to add that 14,000 back into the church's budget, and Mariana has the...
On the jail.
Oh, under the jail, okay, it's under the jail budget, and she has a line item for that, so I have motion to add that 14,000 back.
Thank you. Have a second, do that vote, second by Ashley, discussion. So you're amending the budget by adding that 14,000 line item for PPD emergency equipment to the church's, or the jail's budget? Any discussion? There being none, go please. Pretty important to get that line added back in.
It has to move first of all.
There we go, somebody can make that amendment now.
Who's second, please?
Well, you need the amendment once again, to add 14,000.
Now.
Motion by Brian, second by Ashley.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add one more thing, as Forrest Gump said, this would be all I have to say about this, but this should leave us to maybe, and Mariana can correct it, the numbers are not active here, this should leave us at about 615,427 deficit, and that will still leave, after that amount, it should still be around 3.7 million in fund balance in the general fund, after all the amendments were made or set. And of course, the original amendment, keep in mind, the increase this year with the 911, and also the agreement for the years ensuing after this fiscal year, the increase in money there are about 250,000 dollars.
Thank you, Bobby. So I guess now that's to the amendment. Have a motion to, to a discussion, and Bobby's already made motion, and we're checking. Discussion. Y'all prefer discussion. Now for the budget, has a minute. And that has been vetted, invented, and reviewed, and reviewed and reviewed, and I'll thank budget clients for the many, many, many hours that they invested on your behalf, and Mariana's budget, and she earned on that grant for all she has done on that tip, so any discussion?
Now, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is, Mr. Petticoat, that we were, we got motion, and now has amended all the amendments, and someone's lower is second, is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you. Discussion? Okay, let's go, please.
Bobby and I.
Let's go, please. What's that? Nineteen, yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Glad to do that.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like, Mr. Matt Patton, we include the two letters that I've given to her from 911, I'd like her to read it, and we had a record in our minutes.
Okay, eleven, safe. Resolution 2020-18, resolution setting the tax levy in Calhoun County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020.
So you have a copy of that, you've activated the motion by Margaret Bryan, okay? You made motion, fine.
Motion to approve the tax levy.
And second by, I didn't know if I was looking at the table. You cleared that already, or, okay, any discussion? That's what I think, but discussion?
I just, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm here, regular. All right. Well, I think, I'll put my book there. Well, as far as tax, maybe the motion is approved to the resolution 2028, and this is set to uniform tax rate to 58, the rule that took... And this is set at the uniformed tax rate of 258, the rule at 293. Manchester rate will be at 264. Basically, this will be keeping the tax rates the same as last year. The only change is for some cents removed from the capital projects, about two and a half cents, four cents in general debt service, we're told about six and a half cents. And those pennies were moved to the general fund this year, which that's for this fiscal year. So that's something to change next fiscal year.
Thank you, Bobby, for that. And the HPM generates about $117,000, as you know. So I think the chair recognizes that.
I think that Commissioner Mike answered my question. I just wanted to verify to be sure that all of the rates are exactly the same as they were. The only thing that you've done is you've changed the distribution of where that money actually goes to.
That's true. That's true. I have another question. Any other comments or questions? Please, okay? You won't have. Motion on improving the tax levy. Okay, let's go please. And we're committing to a citizens' vote tax increase. Twenty yes, thank you.
11A, resolution 2020-19, resolution to eliminate the personnel compensation committee and to establish the policies and procedures committee.
I have a motion by, uh, Mary seconded by Ashby on that, uh, on the resolution 2020-19. Discussion. Have this in here? Right.
I just would like someone who I guess legislated to give us a clear understanding. So we don't have to read this as a personal change. And what is being commented towards and change.
Mr. Howard. Very quick overview. We had several meetings on this, and personnel compensation had some representatives added. And we drafted this as per their instructions, requests, recommendations. Because originally, the personnel compensation committee really didn't have any authority to do much. All they were really doing was coming up with policies and procedures. So basically, we just changed the title to match exactly what they were doing. Nothing actually changed as far as the committee was set up. We still have the same number of commissioners. We still have the same number of department heads. We lost one, so we just left it at two instead of three. The remaining officers that are serving on that committee will fulfill the rest of the year. And then at that point, then new members will be appointed the same as they always have.
You said that?
That is correct.
Motion, action?
And just to confirm, because I said on what was personnel compensation. It was also to alleviate any confusion for county employees. Because the process in us having compensation in the committee names, I thought that we handled raises and their actual salaries, and we can't do that. We were technically serving as a middleman, and we're basically saying yes or no to a recommendation and passing them on to budget finance. So this will alleviate that confusion. And hopefully, the fact that they come to us for anything salary related.
Any further statement? There being none, let's go please.
11A, resolution 2020-20, resolution by the board of the county, the Coffee County ambulance to request the Coffee County Board of Commissioners to amend its resolution number 2016-17.
I have a motion by Kim, second by Mrs. Andrew. Discussion? This is not due.
Yeah, we've been working on this for about a year or so. Well, actually, probably longer than a year or so. And we, all this is, is just changes in verbiage that, you know, the state updated their, we're just going along with what the state did. When they updated their verbiage, we just updated along with the state. So this is just going along with what the state is updating too. So we're just, we're just updating along with what the state is saying. And going along with that in our. That's all this is. And we've changed anything. Just.
I can't. Any others in discussion? There being none, let's go please.
There been no other labor reports of the standing committees?
I'm thinking we're not going to have any report since we did the budget, and we don't have anything working on the project now.
I just like.
There's nothing to report because we had our last meeting before our last commissioner meeting. And we recorded everything on that day. So our next meeting will be before, probably, this.
Pat Bobb.
We have discussed the clerk's office, when you buy your license and tax and such. She's changing the traffic pattern. As you know, everybody would enter and exit the same door from her office area. And she thought she requested that the customers, corrected by Ron recently, her, her customers will enter the main lobby of C-Cap here, go down the hall, go through a new lock door that's more situated to the rear of her area, where they do their business, then they'll come back out the door that has been entry and exit for years and years. So that makes a lot of sense. So I think it's probably not the door in yet. It's already five doors around, the doors and windows or something. That was, that was already made for discussion. And I think Teresa is entering around now, there's a walk-up window. And I think we're going to do a study on that because of pedestrians having to walk across the parking lot near the corner where the drive-thru is. So there, and also the ADA requirements for such a walk-up window. And the courthouse, the old courthouse, the painting is underway. Robert has asked volunteer paint, contracted good. He asked him to go ahead and give us a quote of repairing the lightning damage. If anybody's been around the square, you can see that ugly looking post on the curb. And if, now you're going to give us a quote, and Paul's probably going to want to get that repaired. I might see that done. Other than that, that's all we're.
Helpful for recreation.
We are, at this time, meeting, we need to meet places. We have not met for the last several, few, few, several weeks. But we've had no agenda personally left to meet. So we will schedule a meeting for the 14th day in this one, Friday afternoon. Very good meeting.
Thank you.
Law enforcement?
We had a meeting last Thursday with the deputy.
Thank you. And any statements or announcements? I would like to state that this Thursday will have a call in 4:00. We're going to hit, we're going to let the visions, we're going to call it. Is correct.
I'd like to say that I serve on the rural solid place board. And our newest member is, we voted on his last meeting, Mr. Phil. He attended his first meeting the other day. I wanted to recognize a former commissioner that sits, or Commissioner Mike Ray, as a major shelter. He served the whole rural solid place through, through his entire tenure as a commission. And he did a good job. We had a small ceremony at, maybe, two meetings ago where the director, Randy Bell, presented him with a plaque liberating his services to rural solid place. And I just wanted to be sure that he was there to do a good job. He's a long.
Thank you. Any other statements or announcements? I'll then y'all.
Yeah, I'm happy to say, I mean, I was thanking Diane earlier. And I'd like to thank her for her service on the, uh, ambulance authority. How many years was it? Six years. I think you came on about the same time I did. And I'd like to thank her for her service on the authority. Good job. Appreciate your service.
Thank you, Peter. Any other statements or announcements? Now, y'all be safe at home, I'll retain a motion to, to adjourn. Motion by Ashby, second by Kim. We are adjourned. Thank you for your service.